All right, we're gonna start our meeting for August 28th. Um, welcome everybody. Um, we're gonna start with warrants, I'd like to make a motion that we accept payroll number 22 for one thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'd like to make a motion that we accept payroll accounts payable. Number 23 for three hundred forty-two thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars and forty-one cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And actually, that the reason that was so high is because over three hundred twenty thousand was for road work. So, um, we've enjoyed the roads, now we gotta pay for it. All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes for um eight twenty-one, twenty-three select board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll sign those quickly.
Oh, I didn't print this because I don't think you have time.
I printed them.
I did, okay.
At least I thought I did. You didn't, so. We'll print, we'll, we'll sign them later. Um, no, I'm gonna go one. We've changed this, we've changed that one. This one. There it is. And we saw.
Is there anybody on Zoom that I should put in the notes?
Uh, no. Not, not so far. All right, uh, next on our agenda is citizens issues. I think Joe had a concern.
Yeah, about parking during the events.
Mm-hmm.
On their property. It's just getting all out of hand, you know, it was garbage and liquor bottles dropped. You know, I kinda was patient with the marathon because I was there in the corner, but I'm not okay. I know that when the Tar Box Inn has events, they rent town hall space. You know, they don't just help themselves, the neighbors parking on their lawn when they have events. I mean, they've got several hundred people there at one time, or a hundred plus, and they bus them in. Even the bus is respective of it, because when they park, they park on post office and not on grass. They just kinda, well, that was another issue, was them idling on the dirt road, but that's a whole other different thing.
Okay.
So, yeah.
But that issue.
So, what, what did you see then was yesterday?
Just the parking and it being so wet, you know, rutting it up, muddying it up, just, you know, so it's our private area and it just kinda feels like everybody's helping themselves and parking.
Oh, absolutely.
And it's not just parking on the shoulder, it's literally driving into the grass.
Into the trees.
Going down the little ditch, kinda getting sitting like that, and it's just like, are you serious?
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, that's my issue.
Right, we're twelve thirty-eight in the keys, twelve thirty-six as you know, so it's our house where the majority of the parking is. And not only is it on our lawn causing ruts, and I've been there and I, it's like a ritual. After there's any town hall event, I have to go and pull where the parking was, pick up trash with my toddler. And the fact that it's now, you know, events on a Sunday, that's where my husband works sixty hours a week can mow the lawn. So, it's like he can't access our lawn to mow it, which is unfair and unfair to us that we weren't given any notice if this was some previous, you know, arrangement where people are parking on our lawn. Um, so the debris, the ruts, the damage to the property is just unacceptable as well as, you know, just no giving notice or no kind of knocking on the door, giving us a phone call. Um, and the last thing is, I noticed when pulling out of our driveway, people parking there, we're not able to see when we're pulling out. So, it causes a safety issue for my family and Mick's family, my next door neighbor, which we don't appreciate, obviously.
So, you said pulling out of your driveway, you can't see because of the cars?
With cars parked on either side of the driveway.
Oh, yeah, they'll, they'll nose all the way into the driveway.
Yep, yep.
When they're packing all in there, you know?
Yeah.
So, it's just, it's, it's just, I don't know, just if I didn't consider it, because I know we don't park on other people's lawns when we're going for a walk around the island or something, you know what I mean? There's designated parking. I get it when there's overflow, but I think it needs to be figured out.
Yeah, and, and actually, I wanna say, first of all, I didn't know that there was a problem two weeks ago or the week before, which we had known.
Well, it's been, you know, I've been here now two years, you know, I've just kinda been patient with it. I get it, there's overflow. I was, I was running the marathon, I was posted up on post office. But it's just, it's like, you know, you got, first of all, you got cars flying up the hill to the barn, and I'm sitting there directing traffic and they're doing like fifty.
Mm-hmm.
And then you all of a sudden gotta break heart, and I'm like, slow down, like, there's people carriages with the kids.
Yep.
You know, just, just that whole stretch of road right there. I mean, it's not the safest road, but you got people that don't take that into consideration sometimes. That's another thing.
Yeah, it's, it's an issue, yeah, yeah, it's an issue that the entire.
It's always been an issue, I get it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, let's talk about the parking.
Yeah.
Because I think, I actually, I called Bill Cooney today as well. Bill used to be the, the chair of the town hall committee for, for a number of years. And just, had there ever been a, a complaint or a problem? And, and he said, even though I've never heard of a problem. And so, the first, this is the first time I've heard that we've had a problem like with trash. Um, uh, so, I, I'm surprised and Sir Shabrin is, is a, is a member of the history committee to put on that, that event. Um, we used to, uh, you know, people park along the main road and we've done that, uh, pretty much forever. But people have been very respectful of the properties.
Well, that's what I mean, well, it started by me, well, it really got me is when the parries were having their trees cleared um, last year, and they were doing turnarounds on post office. So, first of all, they were tearing it up when it was all soupy. And then the, you know, their front wheels were grabbing and going down into the, into the little side ditch. And I actually had it and I went outside to talk to the guy, we'll send somebody back, that could happen. But, you know, it's just, it's, and then when the road people were there, same thing. You know, they gotta make that swing with the big flatbed and you're gonna keep clipping the corner of my driveway, you know? And it's just, oh, how many times before I finally, I'm here, because I'm annoyed, you know what I mean?
No, it did, yeah.
Well, but, but tip, tip, tip to, to the parking issue, just, as I say, this is, because you, you talked about the, the problem with the.
Yeah, the parking was, I mean, the marathon was busy. So, they all came all the way up, so the, across from Danielle and Stan, so my, the neighbors diagonally, like, they were parked all the way up to the little pond, the little retention pond. They couldn't park past that, you know, further up, if there was more room, because I was on point on post office. But they packed all the way in, all the way from, you know, the top of the old town hall, all the way to in front of the little retention pond.
I think this is, this may have been the biggest attendance we've had this year.
Right.
Uh, it was more than per town meeting. It's, it's nothing that we're used to have. When we had the, the, the picnics, uh, the requirements of picnics in the summertime, we used to have, uh, you know, a hundred, two hundred people.
Yeah.
So, so there were cars up and down, uh, here.
I, I get it, I get it, I just think we should figure out a way to direct traffic or have some parking, even if it's on the shoulder of post office, where it's not gonna really affect anyone.
High attendance is good. I think due diligence by the town, just like we expect of the Tar Box Inn, when they have overflow that they rent from the town to park their customers at the old town hall. I think if there's overflow and if you have an attendance that maximizes the parking, safe parking, that it should overflow into the tar box. I mean, it shouldn't be in the front of my lawn.
Agreed.
I know that I, I didn't attend the event, but I was passing through, I had actually been down to the Sasanowa. Um, but it was, it was very chaotic, it was when we were, everyone was exiting. And I think that maybe something to consider would be when an event exceeds a certain number of attendees, so potentially you can creep that out to a certain number of vehicles. It will require some sort of traffic control of some sort. Because I think that it, I know that I witnessed potential accidents left and right, just trying to pass through there.
Yeah, because you have people that try to like turn around in the middle of the road. You know what I mean? They're doing K-turns. So, they're turning like literally off of our lawn and trying to make a U-turn, you know?
You know, some people that are excited coming out of an event and they're, you know, fumbled about what, so they're talking and they kind of forget their surroundings and that they're, yeah, it's a, you know, a bunch of cars parked, but you're walking into a main road, the main road.
One of the things that, and I, I actually was surprised, because I, I, I went there yesterday and in the past, what I've always seen is that going down towards the town hall, on the right-hand side is where everybody parked. Because there would be a huge line all the way down, so it wasn't on somebody's property, or it was on nobody's lawn.
Yeah.
So, what I noticed yesterday was that there was nobody parked there. And for, I have no idea why, but they all decided to park south of the town hall, which is where your property is. Um, and I'm wondering if, if one, one solution is when we know we're gonna have an, an, an event, you know, we didn't know yesterday it was gonna be as many people as possible, which is a good thing. But, you know, you're gonna have your town hall meeting, I mean, next, um, this Monday, this coming Monday, we're gonna have a picnic there. Have no clue how many people, but we could possibly put cones or something there during, and, and yesterday, had we known that it'd been a problem in the past, you know, there were enough um, history committee members, if somebody could have gone down there and said, you know, park further up or park where there isn't obviously a lawn, because I, I know you have lawns right there, I mean, it's, it's clear. Um, so that could be, um, a way to maybe address that, is that, um, you know, that, that would just be clear. And after a while, people should get used to not having, you know, not being able to park there. It's just as far to walk from your corner there as it is from walking from the north side there.
Yeah.
Um, so it's not a matter of being able to walk there or not. But, you know, I hate to say, we don't want crowds to come and, and, you know, a lot of people can't walk that far um, if we had them all the way up at the Tar Box Inn, but that also is another solution. We could definitely talk to Tar Box Inn to see whether they would be willing to do that. But I would think for Monday, I will definitely contact the, the individual who's in charge of the town hall for Monday and we can ask them to please have somebody out there. And if you guys know, from two to four, we're supposed to have a picnic there that maybe get some cones or, you know, stake it and just, um, you shouldn't have to be out there directing it. That, that should be something that whoever's in charge of that event, you know, can monitor that. But I think if, um, enough cars aren't going there, they're, they're gonna park wherever all the other cars are, that would be the whole.
I'm sure there's, you know, standard operating procedure for whoever takes up the space of the old town hall, but I think one of the criteria should be to let your guests know where it's appropriate to park.
Yeah, and actually, that's why I had mentioned yesterday that I want to have the, um, and, and the, the chair of the, um, the town hall committee is, is here, so.
I think we, as the chair though, I think that we look to the selectmen to say, where should we put the overflow, drop a few overflow cars? Because it is very limited in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As I say, that's traditionally, we have parked cars alongside the road.
Yeah.
That's been how it, rightly or wrongly. Uh, but this is a good policy discussion, because I think it is a policy. If we have to change how we operate, then let's, we, we talk about doing it. And I, to, to Bailey's point, this isn't a, a town hall committee responsibility. Uh, they, they just have some of the history, you know?
Right, but, but just even being aware of when events are happening and, and I know you don't make the final decision.
I did ask people if you should email a, a schedule for the month.
Yeah.
But evidently that's, I just have to go online. The problem is that they're not always online.
Yeah.
So, it's kind of, that kind of was a.
Mostly it's, as, you know, in terms of the volume, most of the meetings and so forth live within the parking area.
Right.
It is when we have something larger, uh, and we don't always know, but maybe this is where it takes it into policy. We, we have some statements for the, the, the people who rent the town hall. We make use of the town hall, we have, um, some additional responsibility, uh, that respects people.
Gay?
You know, it's really only also because that has also increased the traffic load for the neighbors. It's only been since the present owners of Squire Tar Box that, that area of road and the town hall has been used at all. Because up until the present owners, the Squire Tar Box always maintained their own parking. And it was the original intent that they were gonna put parking down below, and in fact, Mario and, um, Ronnie actually did have people park down below. So, that is something that for the neighbors in the area, whether they're using the town hall or not, they're still using the area in between and it's essentially doubled, doubled the parking load since they started using the town hall as overflow park.
But this wasn't, this was involved in, yeah, yesterday?
Well, no, it didn't yesterday, but he talked about in the past having beer bottles and stuff. I'm hoping that's not history committee clientele, that's more likely to be weddings and things like that.
That was a week before.
So, when you talk about trash, was, was, was there trash yesterday?
No, I mean, yes, there was trash yesterday and ruts, because of the ground, obviously, it's saturated, as we all know. Um, but in the, there was no alcohol bottles this time. But there's never been a problem of the tar box, whenever there's an event, there, we, there, there's no cars in front of our.
So, it hasn't been the Tar Box Inn, yes?
It's, it's a town.
It's just, um, like the, yeah, it was, when I, when it started getting under my skin was the marathon. Um, because it literally, one guy trapped almost backed into the telephone pole, because he was trying to squeeze in. You know, at the end of the marathon, families wanna come and, 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 but they're driving around, literally U-turning around.
Yeah.
I, you know, I put up with it, but they're U-turning in the, in the, in the, in my shop all the time, you know what I mean? You know, I don't have it blockaded off, I don't fence off, I don't put rocks, you know, but, you know what I mean? It's just like when you're, it just cringes me when I see it.
Yeah, and it's not safe.
You know, they're, you know, people that, they just fly in, they miss the post office and they just dart right into the, into my shop, throw a U-turn because they missed post office, because they're going too fast.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and it's just like they just, it's like free rein, because it's, it's, it's open, you know, to make that turnaround.
It will.
Does anybody know how many parking spots the town hall actually has? Like, what's the capacity?
Well, because it depends on how people park and the size of the vehicles.
Yeah, that's not really more.
There's enough lines drawn out now.
Right, I'm trying to rewrite right now, like, our guide for the town hall, and I think it would be good to add, you know, there's X amount of parking, if you expect your event to exceed it, you can get in touch with the Tar Box Inn or whatever we decide the next.
We can block out, I mean, I can block out vehicles easy enough with side lock chock.
Yeah, if we can just get an estimate and say approximately, um, that would at least give people guidance. So, I don't think there's anything about that in the guide right now.
There, there's nothing, because we've never had a parking.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just wanna be clear, everything I know about that goes on at the town hall is on the website calendar. As soon as I hear it and I put it on there, I don't know what's here about everything. Like, sometimes I drive by and there's cars and I'm like, I don't know what's going on today. So, I think also clarity with like all the town committees who might use it. I know sometimes, like I did, Dennis didn't even tell me about this event until the last. I was like, oh, are you having an event? I think I heard something, sometimes it's like word of mouth and that's the only way I figure it out. So, just real clarity on the process for how we approve events.
How are they signing up for it if you don't, if you're not, I mean, how do people sign up for it?
So, renters fill out a rental application.
And who do they turn it into?
Me, but town committees are different because, and correct me if I'm wrong, they are part of the towns, they have access to the town hall. So, I don't think we've made them fill out the application.
No, but we should be, people, town committees should be telling you, because otherwise you have two town committees terms at the same time.
Right, but I don't think there's really been a process established for that, so maybe we should have them fill out the application. It's a page, it wouldn't hurt for us to know what's going on.
Well, and then they'd also be agreeing to the conditions of utilizing the town hall.
Yeah, we want, if we have a policy, then yes, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Right, yeah, yeah. So, that could be something we clarify and just send out to all the committees, hey.
And, and Joey, I also wanna say, sort of in defense of the town, um, public, is that hopefully, um, what you saw last week, you know, there were a lot of people from, um, out of town.
No, we get that.
So, I hope there's that, that the majority.
Yeah, and, and even with this historical thing last night, I mean, you got New Hampshire plates, Jersey plates, what was it?
Oh, yeah, there were.
Yeah, they're all different, you know?
Yeah.
Who was one of the summer people too?
And, and I get it, and it's different now, because now that we live here, we're not the summer residents, you know? Um, traveling, you know, and, and I get it, it's just, uh, you know, sometimes, you know?
I just know that sometimes people from away aren't as kind or as considerate with.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, so hopefully, um.
Or if one person establishes the pattern and have a good.
Exactly, right.
Else.
Yeah.
They take it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, one, I, I would like to look at, um, the road on either side, because I do know we used to park north of the town hall, on the right-hand side, the same, same side of town. I know there's a ditch over there, but it seems to me that's where I always park. And it wasn't in anybody's driveway or, or any, any, um, you know, any lawn or anything.
Yeah, there was no impeding there.
Right, so, um, I just don't know why nobody parked there, and maybe somebody started parking down there. You've got nice flat area out there.
Yeah, that's what it is, it's flat, it's clean, you don't open your door into the tree line.
So, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, so it's more, it's convenient, so it's easier.
Yeah, so maybe it's part of the policy.
Because it's mode, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank, thank you for doing that. Yeah, so maybe part of the policy is to, to, or part of the parking then is that north side. Um, and we just need to stipulate that, and then when we have an event, um, we need to maybe just.
Specify where they can walk or put some cones or something.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think, uh, we rarely have things this congested. But yes, I think we're gonna need to say, you need to be mindful
Mm-hmm.
of, of, of the parking in that concern and taking some responsibility, because there is an irresponsibility today
No.
in terms of how we do the, uh, use, the use of the town hall.
So, thank you for bringing it to us.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's important as the town for.
Because, yeah, totally.
I mean, I know there's events and, uh, uh, uh.
Yeah, no, but it's.
Consider that, like, it's great.
Yeah.
You know, people are showing up for these things, it's just like now it's a, you know, it's gonna be an issue to have to be addressed.
No, totally. And we'll, we'll make sure, I, I won't be here Monday, but hopefully somebody will take care of that Monday. I'll, I'll make sure that Barbara knows about it. Gay, you had your hand raised?
It, it's another issue, but, and I wouldn't have thought about it, except that you brought up the race. But, um, yesterday at the event that was there, when people arrived at the town hall yesterday, it was mess. Um, it had Dee Dee swept the whole place, she had to clean the bathrooms.
Oh.
There were dirty dishes in the sink, it was mustard all over the counters because food and debris had been left in the sink. And so, that also since has been brought up as a reminder. Um, and somebody that was there said that there probably were not enough volunteers to help erase people. So, maybe we could look at next year, asking for some volunteers, because people would help, but the, the town hall, if we had, if you had actually rented out the town hall
Yeah.
and somebody went in yesterday, they would have had to get their money back.
This is an interesting question for me, because I've never inspected it after an event. Is that something the town clerk has been responsible for?
No.
No.
No, we're relying on people to actually clean up after themselves.
Well, and that's, and it's going back to having somebody, you know, everyone sign and go through an agreement. But it actually was the town hall, you know, just an FYI, that would check after an event to make sure
Yes.
that it was clean after an event, partly because it does get rented out many times. And if you had a renter go into it and it was in the shape it was in yesterday, they would wonder why we were charging for it, I have to say. I mean, Dee cleaned up a really dirty mess in the restroom, so we don't want that.
Oh, after the.
So, yeah, it was after, from the marathon, right?
Yeah.
So, and you know, there are people that would help out by all means to make that event a success, but we would not want that to happen again.
Yeah, maybe we should.
Well, it sounds like we shouldn't rent it to them again. That's.
So, I like the idea of having everybody sign, everybody fill out an application, no matter what the committee is. So, history committee, whatever, would, would fill out the application, and in that application, it talks about having to be mindful of parking and also then cleaning up afterwards.
Would you know the cleaning in the guidelines and what you're supposed to do, but there's just no follow-up to inspect or any consequence? They don't, we don't have a deposit.
Which you want a name when you throw in an application, if it's a town committee, there's a name, how come this wasn't cleaned up?
Well, there's, there's more accountability there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For renter and outside person, yeah.
Maybe just twenty-five, fifty bucks.
Well, maybe, maybe for renters, we need to, um.
What, a deposit?
Exactly, I was just gonna say, yeah, charge more.
Hold a deposit and then after inspection, and we'll mail it back to you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, charge like a hundred fifty dollars and.
Just a cleanup fee?
Yep.
I mean, make it substantial that it's, yeah, we'd wanna clean it up for a hundred fifty dollars or two hundred dollars
Was this for town?
as a refundable deposit, and if it's not clean to your specs, then we keep the two hundred dollars and whoever ends up cleaning the place gets paid.
Yeah.
Would that be from the town committees as well?
We don't have money.
Okay, that's, generally speaking, after going in, after events, it's not people that are paying money to rent the place that is.
I, I was. Yeah. But at least somebody could call and say, look, um, history committee, uh, whoever's in charge of the history committee to be able to say, you left a mess and we hope that before our next meeting that you go in and clean up. And, and that at least puts a little bit of shame, if nothing else.
Their budgets are our budgets, so.
Yeah.
History committee cleaned it for whoever left it there. I mean, we cleaned the town hall yesterday.
No, yeah.
No, we're not saying that, she's not saying, she's not saying that.
That's.
No, I'm, I'm saying that, for example, if at the end of the meeting
What an example, oh, yeah.
that it wasn't cleaned up, and then we get ready for another event or, or somebody goes down and does a spot check or something and says it's not clean, then at least we could call and say, hey, look, history committee, you guys last used this and you didn't clean up and, um.
I can assure you, Bill Hopkins would do that in a heartbeat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe it's that we need to do likewise, and we can do that if we have somebody who's filled out an application, um, and.
But just to be clear, people from outside town committees do fill out an application, so.
Yeah, yeah, and they pay, they also pay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that, I like that idea of adding that little amount on.
I, I think.
For a deposit and we can get back at it.
If they, if, right, if we find it's in satisfactory condition.
Yeah. Yeah, if we had a, a updated, a updated calendar to.
Yeah, no, that's an issue too, it's, it's a communication.
Yeah, but it should be on the calendar, if, but that application would, would guarantee.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that would trigger me to know about it, right?
Right.
So, we don't have any place where like, I know, I put on, and I do this, and someone follows up or I tell Jeff, you need to go look and make sure it's clean and blah, 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 so it sounds like a process to get in place.
Yep, Jeff, you understand?
Yeah, again, I think we need to talk to the organizers of the race, the people who can.
Yeah, that's a whole other issue, yeah.
So, we have the, the, because this was unusual
Yes.
to have it be so bad.
Yes, it was.
And, and pretty outrageous.
Wow, yeah.
So, but again, I'll say, I think their hearts are in the right place, their execution was not. So, I wouldn't wanna say you can't come back again.
Right, their hearts are in the right.
But, but let them know, this was unacceptable, and we expect different. And, and so, is they, did they plan it for next year? That one is what we check with them.
Are they into do that we could ask for a deposit?
Yeah. I think so, I mean, they're.
It's not, it's not a town office.
Nonprofit organization.
There you go.
But they're benefiting the park.
Right.
What they're doing is benefiting the park.
But if it's not a town.
But still, it's good.
It's just a deposit, they get a tax.
Right, the good point is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
They're paying although they're in the yard.
And that's, I mean, just generally, if they're, if they're, uh, not a town committee, asking for deposits, just, you know, they get it back.
Yeah.
It's a little extra step.
Yeah, and Friends of Westmore Island History isn't a town committee, right? So, even though they're kind of attached, we should.
They're a nonprofit.
Treat them as a renter, even though we like them, they do great things, right?
But this is where we technically are, it was the history committee who took responsibility for that.
Uh, okay.
Because they, they wear two hats, I know.
Yeah.
Consciously, we did that so we'd be able to take advantage of the, uh.
Of everything we can.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, for, for WCA, we, we actually charge for the church and we charge, um, an extra fee for, for cleaning. And if it, um, and if it gets clean, if they clean it up, then fine, and if not, we, uh, yeah, yeah. So, I think, I think just charging an extra amount, uh, like if you charge a hundred dollars and charge a hundred fifty, and you tell them they'll get fifty bucks back if they, if they clean up.
Got it.
And specifically mention about the, the parking as well.
Yeah, I, I think that's the, uh, one new wrinkle to our policy, is to say there's a responsibility, uh, for, for parking. And for us to say again, the history committee, when we're that successful, uh, in having attendance, that gave me one more thing that we, we, we worry about, is just trying to make sure, you know, because we don't know how many people are coming.
It's a nice problem to have that many people.
Yeah.
I think there's just more than a fifty dollar deposit for cleaning, because you couldn't pay somebody to clean that for fifty dollars if you factor in what actual cleaners cost.
Well, I think, I think that's not much of an incentive either.
No.
A hundred fifty would hurt more if they didn't get that back.
At the end of a long event, it might be like, eh, fifty bucks.
Right, no, yeah, totally.
Still, somebody else in there for three hours.
I wanna be a little careful, because we often rent people for like memorial services, so like our local citizens.
And they get it back.
Yeah, but sometimes they don't have, they don't even have the insurance out of pocket, so.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to keep volunteers coming in though to, to clean up behind people, so.
I know. Clean up. Yeah, I hear you.
We, we could try for a. We we could try for a hundred dollars and see what happens and see how much parking people have with that amount, cause that's basically two hundred dollars that they have to fork over and they get a hundred dollars back. Does that?
Yeah, seventy bucks with the insurance too, so it ends up giving it for.
Yeah, yeah, and um just know, and again, I I will talk to the person in charge for money, but we do have an event, I know, uh from two to four, no telling how many people. Um but we'll make make it a point to um one, somebody sort of try to monitor that, but if um if we could get some cones or something, does the um fire department have cones?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So maybe um.
Yeah, I I I I mean, I have solutions, I just didn't wanna go that way, you know what I mean? Like first have a conversation. If it continues, then you know, either you want like barricades and signs and this is more work.
Well, I think.
No, I know, that's, yeah.
We should, yeah.
Just if we could just as a community, like have a conversation and be like, guys, let's park on the north end, not on the south end. Okay, cool.
Okay.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You know what I mean? As opposed to having to start put barricades, cones and flags and all that kind of stuff or, you know, start chaining up with a tractor and having them, you know.
Plus having somebody out there.
Yeah.
You know, before the event starts.
Yeah, we have somebody where where you could get the tractor and the the rock from.
But also you have, you have different kinds of events too, cause cause the the one on Monday is 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 not like a start at two, it's like a kind of drop-in.
Yeah.
Right, right, it's a two to four, so, yeah.
So you're not, so. So it's not like people have to be there at two, they could come at three.
Yeah.
So I'm saying like if you had somebody standing out for parking, it wouldn't be like a little have to be for that.
Yeah, it'd be a little bit harder, but once you get people, I think once you get people parking a certain way, they follow suit, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Then they do sort of follow suit, right.
Yeah, that's how we ended up here.
Yeah.
Because it's really only been three instances since we moved in.
Yeah, cause when when the events get.
Well, I'm glad you said something, because, yeah.
When the events get bigger.
Right.
You know, like I I just noticed with America, like at first it was like tripling down and then they were parking, trying to park on both sides. Do you know what I mean? So now you're bottlenecking everything up and even chief was upset because people are trying to fly through there through our speed bumps and as soon as they hit the last speed bump, they're off. It's and you know, it's like you can put the pedestrian fifteen mile an hour bucket that's right there, that's, you know, I am the one who put it up there. And then I hear coming up the road from the south end, I'm like, all right, this guy's coming pretty quick, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And they come through the little dip and then they come past and I now in the middle of the street like slow down.
Yeah, they come around that corner and up the hill and.
Up the hill, it's like a ramp, it's like Big Zazars.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, I've been wondering about that too, because people have been also talking about specific vehicles that they know exactly what time every morning they come by.
Oh, I know, I I know who all they are. That's a whole other discussion. I've knocked on the doors before too.
Somehow another. Yeah.
Other than.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So, so Monday, let us know how it works, but we're gonna um, you know, we've got something coming up very soon, so we'll check it out.
All right. Okay, thank you guys.
Yep.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Pleasure to be here.
Uh you can leave your chairs. We might have the next guest coming in.
Oh, there you have it.
All right.
Not really.
Any other citizens' issues? Thank you, Demi, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, guys.
Any other citizens' issues? Gay?
Our archival records.
Okay.
Um, I asked for your um consent a few months ago for us to start a repository on the main state archives, main state library site. So the beginnings of it are here. And you can see like annual reports.
And this is at the state level?
This is, yeah, a digital main repository, which is actually, right, it's a combo of um the state library and main state archives. So our town reports.
They're online now, Gary, you can go and do it from home, check it out.
Well, they're not all there, but there's a ton that we've scanned. I've already got more scanned to go on. Um, so town.
Can we look at them already?
Yeah, you could actually, if you go on Digital Main and you search Westport Island, it will bring you to it might take you into a specific part of it, like the annual reports or which I told him I would find, so I need to find the um eighty-eight comp plan, cause we have like the current comprehensive plan, we have the two thousand two, the nineteen ninety-two, we have the recreational plan on here so far. And so I need the eighty-eight one, but partly I show you this so you can be as excited as I am that this is here. Because if you go into any of these things now, like a town report. Because it's a PDF and everything has to be scanned at least two hundred or three hundred DPI to make it searchable. Because it's searchable, you can go into a town report, you can download it and then you can search within it. And you, they're going back.
Looking for, there's a Gary in it.
That is phenomenal, that is phenomenal.
Well, well, yeah.
Gary.
Now, back to the thirties and there will be more.
Gary?
Are on here.
Check out that question you were wanting.
Did you have a question, Gary, about town reports?
Oh, my god, he does.
Well, check this out, Mister Webber. Um, so yeah, back to, I think we have them in there.
So it's searchable.
It is searchable. We're back to the twenties.
Nineteen twenties?
Twenties, the teens, but there are some, like, there are some strict, cause they were harder to.
Going backwards.
It's funny, those little ones, that some of the newer ones were a little harder to scan. So because we couldn't just tear them apart, we had all these extra old ones, so I gotta grab some from in here that I can tear apart. Um and finish scanning in the nineteen, like the two thou- I think nineteen ninety to two thousand in there, they're missing right now, but they're coming. And I already have the the last one ready and I have all of the twenty-tens and twenty-twenty's ready to go, but so this brings us to they tell us, we may have solved one of your problems if you wanna do the little Google site. Um, one security issue that came up was if we wanted to have the repository, the archive of the select board minutes on there, the only way that we could we're thinking on a Google site, cause it's a very, very simple structure. Would be to create a link into her OneDrive. But if you give me consent to scan all of, cause we don't, we could do all of, we don't have to scan the current ones, cause we already have them, we could make them PDF from the Word document. But on all the old ones, we can also add a section in here for the select board minutes, which means then the link would go to the main state library.
Instead of.
It's instead of, instead of any type of Microsoft Office, one of OneDrive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep.
It would go into this repository.
Perfect.
Where they're doing everything to keep it safe.
And they they have all the sort of stuff that they could find at the same time.
Compared to what. At the same time.
Yeah.
Now, how quickly and how often is it, uh would we be able to upload? Like, could I do, we do it every week?
Yes, we're, well, yeah, so we'll have the ability. Um, I'm just, we've been playing kind of time tag here. But as soon as I get, he actually, I gave him all of these that we've done so far and he actually did the uploads of the initial documents that are in here now to let us see what we have.
Yeah.
Which is very cool.
There's a ton of stuff there.
That's great.
Um that, yes, we will be able to, because I will actually know that this much work is done, I will have to do all the rest of them to upload them. But, you know, just uploading is not a big deal and then once it's there, the, it'll, it's accessible to everybody. It's searchable and it gives us redundancy on all of our archival records. So if something happens here, a computer crashes or the building burns down or whatever. The records that are in here are at a separate site.
The searchable thing is really awesome too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a very awesome, yeah.
I would be wondering if it's searchable within the document, like it searches the names of documents?
Right.
Maybe there's a way I can find to do that, but.
Yeah, there are, yeah, it's it's clumsy.
If you're trying to find something in a select select board minutes, it's a conflict.
Correct, right, very, but that's where if we do it in here, it's searchable, so you wanna look up something like Baker Road.
Like, when did the um.
You could hit Baker Road and you could search it and that would.
When did the law, the the constable change his um amount of yearly income, right? He has asked that question twice now and we said what he needed to do is sit there and look through all fifty years of books.
And I think, cause you. I was curious as to why the constable made seven hundred and fifty dollars a year twenty-five years ago and today he's making seven hundred and twenty.
And that's with the with the with the raise that you got this year, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Uh yeah, I think those were the numbers, so.
Yeah, something, yeah, it's it's less now than it was.
You know, how do you lose money in twenty-five years for the same position? I've just had.
Reverse, yeah, it's it's kind of reverse.
And buddy is, if you give money ten dollars, you get a ticket. I mean, you're not gonna complain.
Uh yeah. Oh, no, no.
So I'll just.
No, you're absolutely right, but you know, I do think actually the constable had some additional duties, even though technically um you don't have law enforcement duties or you don't have other kinds of control duties under today's laws. Um, I think that they did do more with the constable than what they do now, however, you're still absolutely right. Um, that's something that we should look into.
So there's there now, we can search it and uh and you and Gary can have a good time.
And we can, we can tell you what they made each year.
Yeah, cause we're all curious about the question.
And buddy, hell, we're ready.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
You, we have a kid.
Yeah.
That's not that hard to look up, Gary. I I didn't really like take it in as a request, but it's probably a request of me and I can figure that out.
Yeah.
So happy to do that.
All right. So.
Gotta ask the right person.
Sir Gay, is there anything that you, you've got this going, is there anything to me from the board?
Don't ask these guys.
Well, what I was asking, cause now that we've done this, I think they're kind of excited that we have as much stuff as we do. Because I'm gonna be putting the archival records in here that we've been getting preserved each year. So that the, oh, cause those are probably the things that are most searched by people. Um, so we'll put those in there, the old valuation books, the town clerk record books. Um, but what I was specifically asking you tonight and why I came was, do you, would you like the select board minutes in here? Because if we put those within here, of course, they're now they're universally accessible, but the other thing is it might solve a problem that um had come up for April when she was looking at the site that she was most interested in pursuing.
To me, they're public already, so anybody that went to the Westport Island site would see them, so you know, it it, I can't see how it could hurt, yeah, it's it just.
Yeah, so if you're on board with that, then we'll make a section for select board minutes. And get that up and started and then all you're gonna need for a new website is a script. So that when people are looking at, it will, it will bring them right over there instead of into your office account.
Yep, that's awesome.
So.
So with with this digital main site, it's, you can do searches using Google and it's gonna come up. They they're, so it's accessible generally speaking, so if someone wants to search on Westport Island Comprehensive Plan, it would come up?
I'm gonna have to see how that would, I know that I can go to Digital Main and I can get any documents that have been archived. And some towns are starting to do this. Um, so I know I can go into Digital Main and I can pull up these repositories and do that. Whether it would be immediately accessible by a Google search, I'm gonna have to test and see if that's so. But now, like these town reports, the fact that I can show you these, these town reports and the comprehensive plans um beginning in nineteen nineteen ninety-two are in their repository.
Did you just, are you asking if you Google it, will digital?
Right, will Digital Main come up?
Yes, yeah, I just Googled it, it just did, if you click on the link, you go to a page where I can click on Westport Island valuations from nineteen fourteen and I can download it.
So what were you searching?
So what did you Google search?
I searched Westport Island records and the first three hits were our website. And then the fourth hit was the Digital Main.
Excellent.
Okay.
And as that gets searched more, it'll come, it'll come up higher as a, as an option. I mean, this is, this is brand new.
Yeah.
So the fact that it's coming up for.
There's probably not too many other things out there, but this is good. The fact that people can do it is the is the key.
Yeah. Correct.
And they don't have to know about Digital Main at all. They can just search on Westport Island.
Right.
Right, right. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's great, thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion that we uh actually have um the minutes, uh our select board minutes digitalized on, digitalized on uh Digital Main. Um, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? All right.
All right.
It's official.
Thank you, Gay.
Thank you, Gay.
Yes, it is.
Very exciting.
All right, let's go to Rhodes. Um. So Rhodes, we wanted to look at the um Bay Shore Road Ditching and Culvert RFP.
Yes.
Any comments or anything that um I believe it's been looked at by the lawyers and.
Let's talk about it though.
Yep.
So now that we have our meeting, um Jim, you came up with the the specs for what the work is. So we're using a standard contract now uh for this road work, um that's gone through our town attorney.
Yeah.
Uh and then the specs are, now you're also pretty standardizing the specs too, which makes it pretty handy. So for this particular uh RFP, it's the Bay Shore Road Ditching. Culvert, as I think you said last week, there's four culverts will be replaced. And specifying three hundred and ninety, or three thousand nine hundred feet of ditching on the east side of Bay Shore Road. Um and then some other things that you're looking, some rip rap.
Yeah, great day where it's cut that groove, pretty substantial groove across just north of Jeff's Xters. Uh and that's just gonna continue to get worse with these big rainstorms. Putting a bigger pipe in there should reduce the velocity. And putting some rock through that ditch shouldn't alleviate it carving the ditch any deeper and slow the velocity down, preventing the erosion. Uh and I've talked to Jeff and it it does have to go onto his land, but it's a problem caused by the town culvert.
Hmm.
Uh, it's a candid eye. If this makes him happy, everybody should be happy in the end, is my goal. Plus the erosion, you know, I mean, we have some responsibility to kind of limit the erosion that's taking place. It it's a long run, there's a lot of water. And it does, it has cars, I mean, this is quite a trench it is carved in.
But you're you're ditching a lot of Bay Shore Road as well this way.
Yeah.
Um, so I think the the ability to improve the situation for Bay Shore Road residents should should be pretty good.
It should be, there's not a lot that can be done on the last half. Uh, because of the wedge. Uh had the causeway not become upstart, tucked to the top of the west, but next year uh I was thinking on getting a hammer for there and North End Road and Saltwell Road. Um, but that's gonna have to wait sometime down the road. Uh, so hopefully we can give it enough so the water flows without washing out some of these driveways, road or whatever. It's just a hard spot, a lot of wedge. And you can build the road up to create a ditch, but eventually the water starts eating into the road where it goes around the end of the ledge and then you end up back where we are right now. I'm sure that was been done ten times over years.
Anything else you want to say about this?
No, I just get the discussion, I guess, I don't have any other questions, I kind of thought, nice package of work.
Just need approval to put that up a bid. Uh, the other thing is the DOT has started chilmering the roads up on Burt's Point Road. So we can expect to see them down here pretty quick. Along with, you may see some winter sand start and be delivered tomorrow.
Yeah, that was one of the questions on here. Um, so let's take one thing at a time, so um I'd like to make a motion.
Just just the last one, so we're doing this, we'll put it out this, uh put it out, uh uh get the the invitation to bid in the in the newspaper for this week.
Do we need to approve this?
Yeah, yeah, but just kind of go with the rest of the material, um that, and we're saying we want the bids done uh in by September eleventh. So it gives them uh basically two weeks.
Two weeks and then you prove, you know, you.
Yeah, and then and then we make a decision.
Awarded and that's it.
Yeah, so so we're giving people two weeks to to respond. Um, to it, and then we're also saying that we want the work done by October thirty-first. So those are the relevant parts of the of the proposal.
October third, first, it would be the hardest one for anybody to plead, I think, at this rate. Anybody that isn't working is I don't understand, let's put it that way.
Well, last year when we talked about the pre-bathing work, uh I think we did an extension for a week.
And and depending what the weather conditions are, I like this because October thirty-first. And and depending what the weather conditions are, I like this because October thirty-first, well, if we get two weeks of rain in October, obviously it would not hurt to extend it a month, a week or two at the other end. It's gotta be, we're gonna see what conditions are.
Well, but if we're putting something out, you have people plan, would it make sense then if it's okay with with you to to extend it a week?
I'd rather not.
Okay.
I'd rather not, I'm waiting, you know, um, I'd rather not.
If if it has to happen, it happens.
Right, it's one of the things that fits.
Don't offer it.
Right.
Cuz that's what it feels like.
If it comes up, well, then it would be a matter of whoever gets the bid. Because if you, if I extend it to November fourteenth, then they're gonna say, well, I get to the fourteenth. Well, it's raining, so I'm gonna say.
Now I need another week, yep.
It's late and I like to do things cuz it's hard to get grass grown, you know, September, first September is about the end of grass grown season. Um, but as long as it's got mulch on it, it'll come up in the spring.
Yeah.
But I being probably being a little overly cautious, interesting that that if anything that that might get more uh interest in bidding. Um, so an extra week that might get more interest in people bidding. But I hear you as well, things once you, we 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 wanna make sure it gets done earlier.
Yeah, I don't think a week, you know, it's only a week, two weeks worth of work at best. So you give somebody six weeks to do, you know, it's plenty of time. By the weather, some, you know, machinery breaks down, some, you know, something out of the ordinary. I'd rather we get thirty-first and then if there's a hard, some sort of hardship, if weather break down or whatever, then we can and uh, you know, extend it if we have to. I'd rather not, I wanna be able to.
Be done.
Thirty-first, unless storm or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. All right, are you okay?
I think that was the relevant stuff.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve and get this out. Um, get this um Bay Shore Road Ditching and Culvert Replacement bid out. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
All right.
All right, um, question for you, status of work for Saltwell Post Office and Fals Point Road?
Might be that, hold the machine out of booth today, slated for down here and get them stumps out of there first. Then that machine's coming out of here because it's too big to do any ditch work. Uh, you'd have to be, be on the side of the road though. So I'm assuming that that means we're gonna be down there this week. I got, I'm in Nedstrom right now, I'm doing a road preparing for pavement, but that may get back burning to come down here.
So hopefully it'll be this week.
We'll be starting this week or something.
Great, and the last thing, and you already sort of mentioned that, there was a question about uh from Dale Reno about delivering sand. And he said he'd like to have it sooner versus later, and I don't know if you've talked to him?
I've talked to him a couple times actually, the end of last week and uh he was, I guess Country Fair is actually gonna pay him to push it up cuz that price was for mixing and pushing it up. So he's told me last week, the end of last week, that he was expecting to have a couple trucks hauling. So I went in there and did some cleanup in the corner and the garbage I took a couple weeks ago in the dump. So he's all set to go, he's got a key. I got to get the garage door opener from Gary, I still have not seen that.
It does open with without the key somehow?
No, you need a key to get in, you can open the door from the inside.
Okay, yep.
But Gary did.
So you can organize it from a truck?
You can open it from the truck.
Is what you want, yeah.
Well, it's the town's, you know, it should be, we should have it back.
Yeah, yeah, there's no use to have it if it, you know, open a garage with it.
But Dale does have a key. And that does go in.
Do you have the, are you set to order uh salt when you're when you're ready?
I told Dale, I said, and I'll be keeping an eye on it, but I told him it's too low sitting there. That when you start getting low on salt, you need to let me know a couple days ahead of time so we can get one ordering.
Do you have a copy of the contract and the info? I I didn't remember if you.
On the salt?
On the salt, so I, that's an action, I'll get you that. So you're all set to go?
That'd be good, uh. Yeah, then then two hogs should be almost enough to put up. Almost what's gonna be hauled in. He's gonna need a third one to finish mixing what's going in. And then obviously one sits in the corner for unexpected circumstances. When you need a little more heat.
All right, I think that's it for Rhodes. Um, I'm looking, there was a um for correspondence, I know there was a letter from uh SL Cyber Security. Um, and this is, uh, there's, they have a state and local cybersecurity grant program. And right now they're looking um to have all of the um, I mean, yeah, I think all the municipalities to um fill out um a form that gives them some input as to um so that they can start to make some decision about how to uh deal with cybersecurity. So I forwarded this on to um.
Okay, who who is the requister? What's the name, what's the organization?
Cyber, SL Cyber Security. It's a grant program. It's a federal grant program administered by the United States Department of Homeland Security.
Okay, that's it, that's good. We're not giving her, maybe just some random.
Anyway, there there, if we have questions or whatever.
Yeah, and and the Maine Emergency Management Association, so so uh this would have been uh Joe and Jason could talk to the Maine EMA, that's good.
We're okay with that, but I just wanted to acknowledge that we did get that and uh we'll need to fill that out.
Who's gonna do that?
Um, I think I sent it to Ashley. Uh, but maybe I should be sending it to uh Gay instead.
And copy me cuz I'd kinda like to know even if I don't have the.
I think that.
Fill it out.
Down the down the road, I think that's more of a an an equal thing.
Okay, I will forward that to you too, thanks. Okey dokey. All right, so um what I'd like to do now is um we'd like to talk about what we've been working on with uh taxes. And so we need to put on a different hat. And so um what I'd like to do is to um to close this meeting, to adjourn this meeting and then open up our next meeting. We're not going anywhere. Um, and actually I think you'll be interested to to hear what we have to say. But what I'd like to do right now is to make a motion that we adjourn our select board meeting temporarily. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, now, I'd like to make a motion that we open our Board of Assessors meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, um, five of us met last week and Jeff is gonna give you an update on all the things that we talked about cuz I think they're kind of interesting. And the nice thing is it's all, all of this is gonna be um recorded so that um the whole town will know exactly what we're up to.
We have some things we have to do.
Yes, yes.
So uh I think the uh, as previously uh that we were going to factor the evaluations. As to say, we're going to raise everyone's property valuation the same uh to get us in line with the state's uh valuation level. Uh, we had a recommendation from uh Evan Goodkowski, our uh assessing agent, to use twenty-two percent. Different amounts, uh twenty-two percent gets us up uh to where evaluations is slightly more than what the state has is that last year. Uh, that should give us enough leeway so that is the, what's driving this is that where we have uh properties that are selling for more money, the the demand for property in Maine has led to big increases in the value of property. It's not reflected in our assessments. So that's why the uh the drive, uh why we're so out of whack with the state. We can expect some of that to continue, this we need to plan for. And we don't have a full value revaluation for two more years, so we've got to get through the next two years. We don't wanna have to do this again. So the twenty-two percent gets us comfortably up with the the state level, we should be fine and not have to do this again. The uh effect of that uh factoring is that the uh mill rate will go down. Uh, it's just basically math, we raise the valuation, we're still trying to raise the same amount of money. So the the mill rate uh gets us to that amount of money we have to raise, it'll it'll go down. Uh, what we were looking at and and reviewing uh again with both Ashley and with Evan was that we think we can, we we don't need to raise taxes beyond what they were last year. So we're expecting to be able to keep uh the taxes the same or slightly less than they were last year. That's what we're looking at now. The plan um is that Evan and and Ashley are going to work on finalizing that amount. Uh, so using the twenty-two percent factoring um uh is what we we uh, so we wanna do it, that's the the number that uh they came up with. Um, taking that level of valuation place, they'll then come up with what uh the the tax rate would be, the mill rate would be, that would generate the the amount of money we need from our, uh, that we approved in town meeting. Uh, and what we're looking at now is that again, it wouldn't would not result in any increased taxes. Uh, we'll be able to finalize that after they 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 do it. Um, what uh like to propose for us is that we agree to have a meeting, special uh meeting of the uh Board of Assessors uh Friday so that we can then approve what Evan and Ashley come up with to finalize uh for the commitment.
So I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So April, can you post that?
Do we have a time, say four o'clock?
Four o'clock, is that, would that work?
That that will work for Friday?
For Friday? Yeah, so we'll say four o'clock Friday, we'll have a notice meeting, we'll meet here in the uh in the town office uh and uh review the the commitment and approve it.
Okay.
Okay, um, second item is that uh we had to revise our two thousand and twenty-two commitment. Now, the reason for that is because we said that we were at a hundred percent of state valuation. State said, no, you're not. Uh, that you, you're 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 actual valuation is below the the threshold. So we needed to change our uh level to ninety-five percent. Uh, and so we've redone the commitment, Ashley has redone the commitment for two thousand and twenty-two. We need to formally approve and then sign that that commitment and resubmit to the state. Uh, doesn't change anything to do with the taxes. Uh, but it does uh 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 mean some paperwork for us and we will probably have to give back about up to two thousand dollars from the state uh because we weren't at a hundred percent valuation and things like the homestead reimbursement, uh, homestead exemption reimbursement, veterans exemption reimbursement uh is based on a hundred percent valuation. So being at ninety-five percent will lose a little bit, but not not that much. But that's, that was the kicker, and that's why we did the factory, we wanna avoid that in future years. Any questions uh about eh about any of this? But I'd I'd like to move then that we uh approve the revised commitment. Uh, again, the only real difference in in the document is that we've gone from a hundred percent valuation, ninety-five percent valuation. It did result in some numbers changing uh on the sheet uh to make it all come out. Uh, but um, again, it doesn't change the taxes. That's that's still fixed.
So I, do I?
Yeah, I think I should abstain.
You have to, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Because you 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 weren't the signature to this.
So all in favor?
Aye. Okay, so we can sign this.
I'm sorry, Dawn seconded and then the vote was two to zero with Lisa abstaining?
Yeah, yes.
And just to show you know, that because this is signed by the assessors from last year. So Dawn and I were assessors for last year, so we will sign.
Yep. There's also something on another page.
There is one here.
And also one before that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Anything else for this?
Yeah, the um I think just, I think I already covered the the third one, which was just basically, we we don't have the commitment signed, that was what I was hoping to get. Yeah, yeah, but uh, so that, I think is that.
Yeah.
You do.
Hey, I showed up.
Okay, so with that, I'd like to move that we adjourn the Board of Assessors meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we can restart this.
And April, I usually um.
Notary?
I think, so you need a notary here for my signature. I'll sign here. Right here. So this is the right place, you did it in the fall suit.
Then we'll move to reopen the select board meeting.
I will make a motion to um restart or reopen our regular board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Always one second, okay. Um, we're gonna go to admin items, uh, we've already appointed Barbara Craig. Um, we wanted to review the senior property tax release letter, which um quite a few people.
You have.
I think you also signed uh or filled one out. It's in here. All the things that have to be signed, all the way to the bottom.
I'm sorry, is this now? I also did nothing.
I remember it was a two-page, it did back.
Front and back, that's right, we sign on the back.
That was a high neighbor and you made the, you got the comma into it. Here it is, top sheet, all right, um.
So why don't you uh summarize or read it?
Yeah, I think I'll just summarize it. Basically, um, this says that last fall, um, you participate in the property tax stabilization for senior citizens program. Um, what we have said to you is that your application was approved. And as such, your twenty twenty-three property taxes on your primary residence will be frozen at the twenty twenty-two level as you knew it would, unless our property taxes actually are lower. So if if the property taxes go down, you'll get the lower amount. Um, on July sixth of this year, the Maine Legislature repealed that um that new law, LD two ninety. And so we will not have this um program offered again. But they did offer um two alternatives for those who may need to get um some kind of tax credit. And they're listed in this document. One of them is a property tax fairness credit, um, which allows Mainers to take a fifteen hundred dollar credit. Uh, it's now up to two thousand dollars. And if there are criteria for you to do that. The second um program to help those who who may need help is the state property tax deferral program. And that is for folks over sixty-five and where um what you can do is is not pay the taxes until your house is sold and then they take those taxes later. All that information is available in this um, in this letter that the hundred and seven of you will be getting. And um we'll be signing this if approved and um, are there any questions, Gary?
No.
No, okay, so I'd like to to make a motion that we approve this letter as is. Do I have a second?
Second.
Take one, April.
All right, thank you, Jeff. I'll let you loan mine one time if I bring one. I'm borrowing my pencil.
Well, the hard part's gonna be addressing all those.
Yeah.
Veterans get a tax break, sorry. How when that veteran dies, that break's gone, does family still live on the house?
I don't know for sure, it's my understanding that it is, but I don't know for sure. It might be that the spouse, you know, surviving partner might, but I don't know how it's written.
I think my mother got it from my father died, but then when she got it, it went away, I think. So I still I'm always looking to save it all.
I understand, but I don't think it goes with the property, I think it goes with the people.
Well, family.
Yeah.
Well, the
The spouse.
I think it's the spouse, it's just like the pension group, that when the the primary, the veteran passes, their spouse gets a pension if that was appropriately set up that way. But when they pass, it's done.
All right, next on our agenda for admin items is a review and approval hopefully of the key policy. And so I'm gonna read, basically, it's a paragraph that talks about how the policy is done. And then part of that policy does have a list of the different positions and the different keys that they have.
It doesn't look like the latest version.
She put, she moved it up to the top.
Yeah, there was a sentence you guys wanted and I thought it would be
I'll just put it up here at the beginning.
Okay.
So, access to town properties by town personnel, officials and volunteers is based on a demonstrated need related to duties of their town position at the discretion of the select board. All keys and alarm codes to town properties will be administered and distributed by the town clerk according to the table below, with the exception of the fire station, which will be administered by the fire chief and the Wright Landing House, where access will be administered by the history committee and helping hands. The town clerk will be responsible for keeping a record of who has keys and security codes to what town properties, securing the return of keys and cancellation of security codes when town personnel or volunteers leave a position that entitled them to keys and recommending the replacement of locks to the select board as necessary. The fireproof vault in the town office contains all interior keys. Town office staff alone have access to the fireproof vault, giving them access to all filing cabinets, desks, shred box, absentee ballot dropbox, overnight dropbox, loading machines and the town hall closet where election materials are stored.
Sounds good.
Yeah, done. All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve this policy, do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just to also note that this is a policy and it can be changed at any time that we decide that it's not working. So a policy isn't something like it when you take a warrant to the town meeting and then you're stuck with it for the next year, this is something that
It's procedure, basically.
Yes, yes.
It is making official what the policy already is and has been for quite some time, but now it's a writing, so there's no confusion and I don't have to make any weird judgment calls.
Yeah.
Yay.
Just hand out the policy, okay. All right, next is information that we got about credit card. Being able to actually take care of some of your business online, which means you wouldn't have to see or wouldn't get to see DD as often as you do now and find that information. And this is from I'm not sure who it's from.
Rapid renewal credit card.
Yeah, there you go, rapid renewal credit card. So basically what this is saying that if we accept this, that what we will be able to do is what you did in the past is that if you wanted to renew your vehicle, your vehicle registration, you'd have to go to the town clerk, she'd look up the vehicle and verify the registration data, calculate the excise tax and provide a total fee due. And then you'd have to provide the check or cash repayment. The municipality provided a paper registration receipt and the clerk had to manually enter that information. Now, what you're gonna be able to do anytime you want is to be able to go online and take care of it yourself. And that includes being able to pay with credit card. DD confirmed for us that it would be, there would be no loss of revenue for the town, that we would get still the full amount of excise and that the customer would pay any fee that would be
With the credit card, yeah.
Yeah, the fee included in that. So any comments or questions or concerns about that?
I think it's a great, a great thing, that makes it much more convenient for townspeople.
Be able to do these property taxes with the same thing or
I don't think
Don't know about property taxes yet.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think Ashley was looking at how to do that as well.
Because I think it'd be, it'd be handy for other people, I think, you know, they could just
Yeah. But this would save DD from having to, you know, try to bounce around and help people on the weekends or whatever it is. So now people can do it on their own, so I think it's a real savings, so. So I'd like to make a motion that we agree to commit to this.
We're basically signing a
Agreement, yeah, yep. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I'm not sure if the policy did sign here. I think there's some, oh no, it's right here. Oops, I don't think it was that first page.
You can sign that.
Yeah. Thank you. And I was just thinking, I like pencils, today is the twenty-eighth.
While we're still kind of on administrative items, one more, April? You had sent some thoughts about some of the procedures with the town hall rental. And since you're already looking at maybe modifying that, it might be good to talk about that now, what you would recommend for us modifying the procedures.
Well, I'm not sure yet because I haven't, I think it really is probably gonna be an attorney question, but there's a little confusion about how we handle the Wright Landing property. So a couple of months ago, someone came in and wanted to rent it for a graduation party. And DD and I were both like, well, it's public, just have your party. You know, we can't guarantee that there'll be parking, it depends on boat traffic and, you know, whatever, be respectful. But then I noticed, I was reading our town hall rental application carefully and I noticed it includes the Wright Landing property as something you can rent. And it doesn't, it didn't make sense to me, I'm like, well, how can you rent that because you can't really reserve the parking? Do we let people like reserve the park for their own private use? I don't think so.
But actually, that's one of the things we did decide to do. Not so much, partially because it was in saving, it is a fair thing, but for like the WCA did reserve the use of the property outside so that they could have an event, they did several over the last couple of years there, and that just, they're doing it there. Someone else could if they were trying to, wanted to do a picnic, we could have said, we'd like to do it there. We could also say, it doesn't make sense, it's not the house.
Right, it's just the property.
That's right, and we couldn't guarantee parking.
Right.
So all those things are factors, but if someone wanted to use it and reserve it, we could say, yeah, you can have that. It's our decision to do so.
Yeah.
That was the logic for why it was included.
I mean, I, yeah, I think it should be included and it should be covered somehow because if someone has an event, even this graduation party, say, never mind a WCA event, they probably should be getting like event insurance and it would depend on the size of the event. What I noticed other towns doing, because then I was like, what other towns' parks do, they do permits. So, and that kind of makes sense to me, oh, you want to have an event, you get a permit and you aren't really like renting anything, but you have now permission to have your event there. And, you know, if people park or someone else is already there playing volleyball, that's kind of your problem? You haven't really like rented it per se, but
Would they still be required to have insurance?
Yes, other towns do that, the permit requires, sometimes you have to pay, sometimes you don't and you do have to get event insurance. But they define what an event is, so we'd need to draw the line between like, oh, April and her family go and throw out a blanket and, you know, bring food to invite a couple of families, like, is that an event? Or what rises the level of an event, is it having music, is it having electricity? Is it having more than ten people expected, like, what is it, where's the line where you need a permit? Versus you're just coming to use the park first come or serve. And if we were to allow people to rent the park, how do we like with the town hall, it's obvious, right, like, people aren't gonna wander in and use the town hall because it's just something you rent and you use or you don't, and you generally don't go and hang out there. This one's a little different because sometimes people do just casually go and use the park as a public park. So how do we notify people and sort of, if we wanted to give someone exclusive, exclusive use for an evening or day or doing it off? So I don't know, I just got into the weeds on this as I was thinking it through.
What do you need to do?
Yeah.
A permit sounds like a good, maybe mall rather than, because we're really, we never been thinking that we were renting Wright Landing. We were basically saying you wanted to reserve and use Wright Landing, so we don't have two groups trying to do it at the same time. So that was more the thinking behind it.
Right, and if you got a permit and it went through me and then I could put it on the calendar, so
Yes.
If someone else needed to get a permit, we could have that be sort of public, oh, you need a permit, if you're gonna do something big, you better check with us, I'm gonna have to schedule.
And I like that being a reason is because you can then put it on the calendar, because if somebody just shows up and does something.
Right, like what if the WCA was trying to do their event on Sunday and someone else wanted to have
Right.
Well, people for a barbecue.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But you could have two or three families using the place and wouldn't necessarily need a permit.
Right.
Because there's no, it's not inconvenience anybody else.
Yeah, so we'd have to think it through a little, the reason I got here was I was trying to figure out like, can we shorten this town hall up? We get it really long, really wordy, like, can I just get it down to like one double-sided thing? And then I was like, well, probably Wright Landing should be a whole separate thing. So I'll ask the attorneys, I'll try to get my questions clarified and I'll go from there.
Great.
MMA said, not our problem, ask your attorneys.
The MMA, the questions that are kind of a law in a general sense. But for some, things are special to us, then you really, unfortunately, you have to go through a town attorney and we have to pay for those opinions. But if it's something about, you know, do we need insurance, MMA is our insurance provider.
Yeah.
All right, I've got one other thing on
Just, I think you had another thought as well, April, about the timing of things that I thought was good to bring up, just as you talked about revising. One of the things was that we currently in that form talk about getting the key.
Right.
Which the timing makes no sense.
It's a little muddled because we have people both apply and then sign the legal agreement at the same time. And it's never been quite clear to me, what are the steps in this procedure? And where am I responsible versus the select board versus the renter? So I think it'd be nice to just have a one-page application where they give us some more information about the event than they currently do. You guys approve an application and then I go back to them and I say, here's our legal agreement, here's the town hall guidelines, you know, here's your key eventually. And sort of, and maybe adding inspection to that somehow, like, figure out who does that and adding that in so that if you do charge a deposit, we know when to get it back, but just like really clearly lining up these steps and having them flow in a logical order.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's very good, because it never made sense to me. So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And making it make sense for you, who sort of has a lot of responsibility for this and and we can live with the steps if we know that it makes sense because we have to do this before you do this before. It's like, I know we're all still struggling with that. All right, all right, next item that I've gotten put on here, but we had, we have a letter from William Brewer, our auditor. And he sent us two copies of an engagement letter for the year ending twenty twenty-three. He hasn't given us an amount, but basically if we want to have his services. And I think we do because they're pretty skim out there, hard to, slim out there, hard to find any auditors in today's world. So we need to prove that we do want to continue to have them and if so, then we need to sign two copies and make sure we send it back to them.
Should we do that prior to knowing how much they're gonna charge?
They won't tell us, I think, until we actually, they get in to do it, because it partially, it's based upon the volume of service they have to perform. So they, I don't think they've ever told us in advance.
Okay.
But I think the amount was like sixty-nine hundred, I think, last year. And it actually comes out of surplus, not out of the budget.
Yeah, that was a question I had, it's like, why isn't it one of the warrant items?
We know we're doing it because we don't always know what the amount is gonna be.
Yeah. Several years ago, probably when they changed that, the constable, they also changed so that for whatever reason, this amount of money, whatever the amount is, is gonna come out of surplus rather than a warrant item. Which I just found interesting. So I'd like to make a motion that we sign the engagement letter and have Brewer do our audit again, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, so we'll sign that, and then the last thing that, any other admin items, April, anything else?
I don't think so.
All right, then under other legal business, we had one other item and that was, I think we had mentioned last week about the town dump and that we were working on that. We did get the paperwork for that, that has to be, the deed that has to be filed to make it all official. So we got the deed and we have to sign it, assuming that we approve it?
We don't sign it, but we just have to approve, then the attorneys will submit it.
Okay.
No.
So we need to agree to this, I think we have pretty much already, but we need to agree that we're willing to have the
What the deed's doing is specifying the property, the usual thing in terms of, it's this property, here's the dimensions referencing the the previous title transfers. It notes specifically that there's a covenant that the premises shall never be used for residential purposes. So again, it's been there in the covenant. And so that continues, it also notes that the conveyance was authorized by the vote of the town June twenty-fourth. So from the town meeting, we had to accept the property and it's referencing that as well. So this will all be incorporated in the deed going forward.
I love that when they indicate the corners of the property, they use an oak tree, like, like that could never come down.
They do that for a lot of things.
I know, I know. All right, and
So I guess I'll move that we're good.
Yeah, yeah, I was trying to think, where was I, yes, okay. Then we have a second, all in favor?
All right. So I'll pass it on to the Ds.
Great, and there was one other thing that I thought about and I just forgot. Oh, just one other thing that I want to mention about the property, I did talk to one of the two of letters and she has received the paperwork, she says she hasn't sent it back. Evidently, the company that, the business that used to deal with it Oh, yeah, anyway, I didn't get to go any further with it, but evidently she has received some paperwork about wanting her well-tested. And she says she hasn't gotten any further with it. So somebody has already reached out to her and she didn't have the paperwork handed to her.
So is it the, did we give them, I don't know, I think there was some question about whether we give them a go and
Right, right.
To the successor for ransom?
Or we must have given the previous one because we had something in writing that said that it would be no more. I remember we didn't want to approve it unless we could guarantee that the DEP or whatever was gonna pay seventy-five percent of it. And I thought we did get that in writing, so this is like a year ago. So, anyway, I will check on that again to see whether, exactly what the paperwork looks like.
Yeah, and we should know the parties that we'll be dealing with.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. So anything else for you guys? I know it's a late night tonight. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor? All right. All right.
So.
Thank you, Mario.
Did Griffith do small woodwork railway tech? Parking tech?